The two verses where we have the theme for this camp. The first verse we find in Genesis, chapter one and verse 28. The book of Genesis and chapter one, verse 28. Shall we all read this verse together? Genesis, chapter one and verse 28. And God blessed them, and God said unto them, Be fruitful and multiply, and dwell on the earth in such reward, and have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over everything. John's Gospel, chapter 15 and verse eight. John's Gospel, chapter 15. Verse eight, some of us must be going with my heart. And we will read this verse together. John's Gospel, chapter 15 and verse eight altogether. Here he is my Father who has taught us that we bear much fruit, so shall we be my disciples. Shall we also read one more verse or couple of verses from the book of Isaiah and chapter five? Book of Isaiah, chapter five. The first two verses we read together. Isaiah, chapter five, verses one and two. Now will I sing to my well-beloved a song of my beloved, touching his binyar, my well-beloved had a binyar in a very fruitful hill, and he fenced it, and gathered all the stones thereof, and had brought him to the choicest vine, and built a tower in the midst of it, and also made a white clay there, and a little bit had a churning called grapes, and it brought forth wild grapes. Shall we pray? Loving and holy Father, our gracious God, we come to thy throne of grace this evening once again in this camp where we have been able to gather together from this morning and spend our time together, have fellowship together, and also meditate upon your precious work. We thank you Lord for the church here which has prayed for this camp also and having been led by you after much prayer. We thank you this camp has been arranged in this place where we could come off from our everyday shows and spend our time here, not only meditating on your work, but also interacting with one another, fellowshiping with one another, sharing things between one another so that we may be spiritually edified and also strengthened in the inner man. We thank you Lord for such a provision you have made available to us. And we believe Lord the prayers of the church in royal words will not go in vain and they will be abundantly answered as we found the answer to the meetings that we have right from the 31st of December. We thank you Lord for speaking unto us. Lord, from the theme of the habitation of God, how we can be the dwelling place of God? That has been your great desire. And even in eternity, as we have been seeing in Revelation, chapter 21 and verse three, the tabernacle of God is going to be with man and he is going to dwell with us. And similarly, we thank you for reminding us this morning that your another great desire is that we should be fruitful upon this earth. Lord, show unto us, continue to speak to us, how we can bear fruit, not just fruit, nor more fruit as we read in John's Gospel, chapter 15, but we may bear much fruit so that the Father in heaven may be glorified and we may be identified, known and seen as the disciples of the Lord Jesus Christ who is the true mine. Lord, we thank you for whatever you brought to us this morning. Now this evening also we pray thou will continue to speak to us. Thank you Lord for those who could join us from the afternoon and also in the evening. Thank you for bringing our dear brother, one hour and sister into our midst. Thank you for the joy of having them in our midst. And also we thank you for touching your hand also Lord and bringing her here so that we all could be together. Now as we look into your word, pray that thou speak to us from thy throne of grace. Grant me your grace Lord to convey your word in all simplicity and clarity so that we may all be able to understand your precious thoughts and word. That we may not only be hearers of your word or appreciators of it, but we may be doers and obeyers of your word. Lord, to bless our time, none may go empty from thy living presence. There could be any who could be coming here on the way, pray that thou bring them safely into our midst. But we ask this prayer with thanksgiving in the name of our Lord and of our Savior, Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Just for the sake of those who are not here with us this morning, just briefly see or briefly go over what we meditated this morning. The Lord has given this thought after much prayer of how we should be fruitful. In Genesis, chapter one, verse 28. We read in the middle of the two verses. This is what the Lord himself said to the first man, or in other words to Adam and Eve, that they should be fruitful. It not only means physically to be fruitful, but also to be spiritually fruitful. This is another great desire of the Lord. Because when we bear fruit, we are able to glorify the Father which is in heaven. And also we are identified as his disciples of our days. And we saw in Isaiah, chapter 43 and verse seven, that the Lord says that we are created for his glory. The Lord has created us not with any other purpose, but to bring glory to himself. We also saw how we can bring glory to the Lord. We saw in Psalm 50 and verse 23, that whoso offered praise glorified me. Through our life of worship, we first bring glory to the Lord. And then we saw through our life of prayer, contained in the same Psalm, Psalm 15 and verse 15. There we see that through our life of prayer, we are able to bring glory to God. And then thirdly, we saw in Matthew, chapter five and verse 16. By our good works, we are able to glorify the Lord. We are in a world which is full of evil works, wicked works, works of darkness and unfruitful works. But those of us who were with those works, when we came to the Lord, when we accepted him as his Savior, all these works are gone according to 2 Corinthians, chapter five and verse 17. All things are revealed here. So instead of all these works, good works are coming to us. Through these good works, we are able to glorify thee, Father in heaven. And we already saw some time ago, these good works are like lights. They shine in a dark world. See, when everything is dark without power or electric supply. We in India, we use candles. Here we have inverters and you know, the generators which start, it start immediately. But in India, if you go to the villages particularly, you find candles and lanterns. When the whole surroundings dark, if there is just one candle, it appears to be very bright. Because the contrast is against the darkness. So in the same way, we with our good works, we shine. We may be very little insignificant in this world, but we are able to shine like bright candles. And this light is not on our own. The source of this light is our good works. So when we shine with such good works, the Father in heaven is glorified. And then fourthly, we saw, Paul says in Galatians, chapter one, verse 24. They glorified God in me. Through our life, through our body, through our actions, through our activities, we bring glory to God. That is how the believer lives in this world. That is how the believer is a challenge and a question. How come this man is not joining with us? How come this man is doing these things and he is able to do this? The world is becoming more and more evil, more and more dark, more and more corrupt. But in such a world, we stand out. So when we stand out like that, obviously they ask questions. How is this man or how this woman is able to do this and not able to do this? So with such a situation, with such a life, we are able to bring glory to God again. Then fifthly, we saw according to our theme, verse in John 15 and verse eight. By our fruit and much fruit, we bring glory to God. If you read in John's Gospel, chapter 15, there are three degrees of fruit the Lord is speaking there. In verse two, he is speaking about fruit and in the same verse, he speaks about more fruit also. And then finally, when we come to verse five and verse eight, he is speaking about much fruit. Only when we bear much fruit, we are able to glorify the Father which is in heaven. So and also we are known as disciples in this world. We also saw the same thing in the life of Joseph. Joseph was a fruitful man. And through his fruitful life, he brought glory to the Lord. And so Pharaoh would ask concerning Joseph, can we find a man as this in whom the spirit of God is? So that is how he glorified God in his life. So the Lord's intention is that we should bring glory to him through our fruitful life. And for that, we saw in Genesis, chapter one, how in the verses from 26 onwards, we saw what the Lord had done to this man. First of all, in verse 27, we saw that God created man in his own image. In other words, God gave his image to man. If anybody saw Adam and house of the Lord, they would have looked like father and mother, I'm sorry, father and son. They were both looking alike. Because the image of God was given to man. Such a privilege was not given to the holy angels. They are obedient angels, not even to one angel, God gave his image. Only to this man whom he found out of the dust of the ground. He created the entire creation apart from man in just five days with just a word of his mouth. He said, let there be light, and there was light. And we see the light even today. Let there be moon and stars, we will see it tonight. But when it came to man, he deformed man out of the dust of the ground, but he gave his own image. Dust got the image of God, what a lot he thought it is. Because man is special. He not only wanted to dwell amongst man, as we saw in the previous theme, he wanted this man to be fruitful. And that's why he gave his own image to man. And then secondly, we saw in verse 28, that God blessed this man. You know, even Abraham, I'm sorry, Adam asking for the blessing, God straight up blessed him. But whereas we saw in Jacob, he was craving for the blessings. And he deceived his brother and got his blessings. And we saw what happened to him. We saw trace the life of Jacob after he received his father's blessings. How he had to leave Haran and leave Bershiva and go to Haran. Bershiva was a fruitful place. Haran is a barren land, an unfruitful land. It is a dry land where there is no water at all. From Bershiva, he went down to Haran. And then we saw how he became a servant. For twenty years he was serving in the house of Laban. He lost his freedom and liberty. And then we saw how he was deceived. The receiver himself was deceived. And then fourthly, we saw how he lost his peace. Because suddenly Laban's sons, they got allegations against Jacob. So he lost his peace there. Then fifthly, in chapter 32, we saw that Jacob was in great fear and also distress. He had so many blessings, he thought he was a blessed man, but he was in great distress. And then finally, sixthly, we saw in the same chapter 32, he was all alone. All that he got, all that he obtained, all that he labored and could possess, he had to give away, send away everything. He was left all alone. Here is a man who thought he was a blessed man or he was a fortunate man, whatever it is, he has come to emptiness. He is standing on the ground of loneliness. And now he realized, what has happened to me? I thought everything is going to be well and excellent after I got the blessings from my fathers. But look here, what has happened to me? And now he realized, these are not the true blessings. What I need is the blessing of the Lord. We saw in Proverbs, chapter 10 and verse 22. The blessing of the Lord, it maketh rich, and addeth no sorrow with it. Whereas the blessing that Jacob got, there was sorrow with it, lot of sorrow. He was in loneliness, he was in fear, he was in trouble. He was at the verge of death. And therefore, he would not leave the Lord now. When he had encountered with the Lord, he says, I will not leave you unless thou wouldst bless me. So that is all, he longed for the blessings of the Lord. Because the blessing of the Lord, it not only makes us rich, but it adds no sorrow with it. But here, in the case of Adam, the Lord himself blessed him with his blessing. It is not man's blessing, it was the Lord's blessing. And then thirdly, we saw in the same verse 28, Genesis one, verse 28. The Lord gave him also dominion and authority over all that he had created. Everything he put under the control and governance of man. He did not give such authority even to the angels of God. To this man, he gave all this authority and power. And then fourthly, we saw in chapter two and verse eight, that he breathed his life into the nostrils of man. And man became a living soul. He had a true life. He not only had a physical life, but he also had the spiritual life. Why is the Lord doing all this? Because he wanted him to bear fruit. He wanted him to be fruitful, why? Because he wanted to be glorified through this man. He did not have a desire, such a desire concerning the angels of God. He did not want to be glorified through the angels. He wanted to be glorified through the mortal man. Through the man who was being formed out of the dust of the ground. See, the Lord's lofty purpose. What a grand thought it is. And then it does not stop there. We see fifthly, in chapter two and verse 19 and 20, that the Lord made Adam a partner in creation. In that, the Lord created everything, but all that was created was named by Adam. He brought all the creatures before Adam. And he asked Adam, Adam to look at all of them. And Adam was simply marveled. So the Lord was asking Adam, how do you find these Adam? He would have said, Lord, simply wonderful, marvelous. What is marvelous? Look at that great animal. He looked at the lion. And then he looked at a small, tiny, beautiful bird. And he said, how beautiful this bird is. And he was in amazement. And then the Lord said, Adam, I am going to give you a job now. And what is a job? My work is over, I have created everything. Now it is your job, your duty to give names to all that I have created, come on. Then Adam could have said, Lord, you are the creator. With some purpose, you would have created every one of them. So it is better you give the name. But the Lord says, no, not me. It is your responsibility. So this is what the Lord did for Adam. Why did he do all this? So that he may be fruitful. And he may through his fruitful life, bring glory to the Father which is in heaven. But we know what happened to Adam. We saw how he failed the Lord, he grieved the Lord, he disappointed the Lord, he committed sin and he had to be driven away from the government, he done. And then we see as we go to chapter five and chapter six, how wicked man became. So and so, in chapter six, we saw, God repented why he made man on the earth. Why did I make this man? Why did I give my life, my spirit, why did I breathe my life into this man, my spirit? And why did I give all the authority to this man? He repented, God. And therefore, we saw in chapter six and chapter seven, how the Lord destroyed everything that was upon the face of the earth. Excepting again, Noah and his family. Because Noah alone, as we read in chapter eight, chapter six, Noah alone found grace in the sight of God. Now Noah went into the ark with his family. And then after the waters descended, Noah was asked to come out of the ark. Now what did the Lord tell Noah? He did not say, go out and take one each of the animal and now bring them an offering to me. The Lord never said that. In fact, Noah on his own built the altar and offered the burnt offering. But what did the Lord tell Noah? See, chapter eight, Genesis, chapter eight, we saw. In verse 17, the Lord says again, in the end of the verse, and be fruitful and multiply upon the earth. Again, the Lord is coming in the same part. Because this is the Lord's great purpose. His purpose can never be changed or altered. So he said, be fruitful and multiply. And when it came to Noah himself, now in verse, chapter eight and verse 17, it was said to the family. Now in chapter nine and verse one, we read, and God blessed Noah. Again, God is blessing this man. Just as God blessed Adam, God is blessing Noah and what for? So that he may become fruitful. Again, in the same chapter, verse seven. And you be fruitful. See, that is the Lord's main and constant desire in law. So this is how the Lord desired that he should be fruitful. Now not only in the Old Testament, we find even in the New Testament, as we read chapters 13, 14, 15 and 17, there are all the fears and words of the Lord before he went into, went to the cross and then went up to heaven. Because this is the Lord's desire, that we should bear fruit to bring glory to him and to be identified as the disciples of the Lord. Now, how to bear fruit? That's what we have been wanting to see. To bear fruit, there are some spiritual principles which have to be followed. And they are not very difficult. They are very simple principles, as we are going to be seeing. And as we follow these principles, we can bear fruit and bring glory to the Father in heaven. Now the first thing for fruit bearing is the ground. Without the ground, there cannot be any possibility of fruit bearing. So therefore, the ground and the field is required. So that is where the first principle comes in. This is what we can call is the possession of the ground, the possession of the field. And this is what the Lord has to do first of all in our lives. Can we come to Matthew's Gospel and chapter 13? Matthew's Gospel, chapter 13. Here, this whole chapter is about the kingdom of God. The Lord has given so many illustrations and paragraphs. And now, shall we all read together verse 44? Matthew's Gospel, chapter 13 and verse 44. Shall we all read together please? Again, the kingdom of heaven is like unto a treasure hidden in a field. The witch when a man hath come, he hid it, and for jolly thereof, goeth and selleth all that he hath, and buyeth that field. What is the word field coming there? So this is how the Lord has to possess the field. Here it is comparing this to a man who found a great treasure in the field. A treasure that is hidden in the field. What is the meaning of this? We see in Luke's Gospel, chapter 12, verse 34. These are again the words of the Lord. Luke's Gospel, chapter 12 and verse 34. For where your treasure is, there will your heart be also. Where the treasure is, there will our hearts be. And that is what happened to this man. He found a treasure in the field and his heart is fixed on that field. And so what is this man doing? He cannot acquire this field all that easily. He has to pay a price for that. And what is the price that he is paying for this field? It is not an ordinary price, it is a great price. Here the Lord says, first of all, when he found the treasure, he says, he hideth it for joy. He does not convey this, he does not share this with anyone. He keeps it as a guarded secret. And he has great joy over that treasure. In the same way, when the Lord looked at us, there was great joy. Even though we have been ruined by sin. Even though man is born on sin and continuing in sin and is destined only to go to the lake of fire. When the Lord looks at a sinner, when the Lord looked at every one of us, there was great joy. That is why in Hebrews, chapter 12, verse two, what do we read there? We know, we have to look at the Lord Jesus Christ, who is the author and continuer and finisher of our faith, as we already saw. But what else Paul writes there? Who, for the joy that was set before him, endured the cross. There is a joy there. There is a joy when the Lord looked at the sinner. There is a joy when the Lord looked at you and I, when we were even in our sins. Even when we were yet sinners, there was a joy. Not joy because of sin, but joy because of the sinner. Because there is going to be a hope for the sinner. There is going to be a salvation for the sinner. There is going to be a redemption for the sinner. There is going to be a great blessing for the sinner. And there is going to be a blessed eternity for this sinner. Therefore, it was joy. And that's why the Lord says here, when he found this treasure, he hideth it for joy. And what did the Lord Jesus do? He went to the cross also for the joy. And because of the joy, he endured the cross. And now what do we read here in Matthew, chapter 13 and verse 44? Who for the joy? What is he doing? He goeth and selleth all that he hath, and buyeth that field, why? Because in Psalm 49, we read, what is the price of our redemption? Psalm 49. Verse eight. Psalm 49 and verse eight. For the redemption of their soul is precious. Our redemption is very, very precious. That's why Paul, knowing that in 2 Corinthians, chapter eight and verse nine, what does he say? That though he was rich, he became poor for our sake. So that by his poverty, we could become rich. He became poor for our sake. That is the price that the Lord Jesus Christ had to pay for you and I, to possess you and I, to redeem you and I, to possess and purchase that field where he can bring you this fruit in our lives. So he became poor for our sake. What is the meaning of that? He had to leave his throne. He had to leave his majesty, his honor, his dominion. He had to make up the throne for thirty-three and a half years. And he came down into this world. He took the form of a servant. He was made in likeness of man. He humbled himself and came into this world. And how do we see this poverty in the person of the Lord Jesus Christ? As we reminded the other day, he was born in a manger. He became poor, the poverty is seen in the birth of the Lord Jesus Christ. And who is he? As the wise men came looking for him, they called, they came looking for a born king. He is not only a born king, he is the king of kings and the lord of lords. And therefore, they thought this king must be in a palace, that's right, they came to inherit. But when they came there... But when we, when they came there, they could not find him. Because this king does not belong to the earthly palace. And where was he? He was born in a manger. That is how he humbled himself and entreated himself. He became poor for our sake. And then how was he living in this world? And where was he born? To which family was he born? He was born to a carpenter. Those days, the carpenters had no value or respect. Nowadays, carpenters are in much demand. But not those days. So he was born to a carpenter's family. And how did he live in this world? In Matthew's Gospel, chapter eight and verse twenty, the Lord Jesus himself said, "The foxes have holes, the birds of the air have nests, but the sun of man hath no way to lay his hair." Foxes have got a place for themselves. The small, even small bird, they have got a nest for themselves. But the one, one who created both of them had no place when he came to the created earth. There was no place for him, there was no others for him. Of course, he was born to the carpenter's family. He was living there. But after some time, there was no attachment of the Lord Jesus Christ with his house. And how do we find that? In Luke's Gospel, chapter two. We know how the Lord Jesus came to the temple. And then, after the pharaohs were returning, they could not find the Lord there. Because he was with the people of the temple and he was talking to them and he was questioning them. And then, when they could not find him, what did they do? They came back looking for him. And they saw him sitting with the people there in the temple and speaking to them. See, verse forty-six, "Who are those people?" "And it came to pass, that after three days they found him in the temple, sitting in the midst of the doctors, both hearing them and asking them questions." He is not only a king, he is the most wisest one. That's why Paul says, "He is wisdom himself." So he was displaying his wisdom. And in verse forty-seven, "And all that heard him, heard, were astonished at his understanding and answered." Now, the parents are coming and they were telling him, in verse forty, "Son, why hast thou thus dealt with us? Behold, thy father and darling have stopped thee surveying." And what should the Lord say? "Oh daddy, oh mommy, I am very sorry." But see the answer of the Lord, verse forty-nine. "And he said unto them, How is it that ye sought me, wist ye not that I must be about my father's business?" He is, he is born to them. They both, Joseph and Marya are his parents, but they are earthly parents. And he says here, "I must be about my father's business." That's why the father, it is mentioned in capital, F is in capitals. Speaking of the heavenly Father, he says, "I must be about my father's business." And I'm sure thereafter, he left his house. After a few years, he moved out of his house. He started being on his father's business. So while he was on his father's business, there was no home for him. There was no place for him to lay his head. That's why when they asked him, he said, "The foxes have holes, the birds of the air have nests, but I have no place to lay my head." And how true it is. If you see in John's Gospel, chapter seven, this is all I'm trying to show, to prove how he became poor for our sake. John's Gospel, chapter seven and verse fifty-three. "And every man went unto his own house." Every man went to his own house. They came, they always, they would come in multitudes to the Lord Jesus. They thronged to the Lord Jesus. What for? They came there to hear him. They came there to be blessed by him. They came there to be healed by him. But when the evening came, what are they doing? Slowly, one by one, they are slipping away. Well, maybe they were, they told the Lord or without telling the Lord, they are slowly withdrawing and going to their own houses. There was not a single person to invite the Lord Jesus. "Lord, why don't you come along to our house? Why don't you stay with us tonight? Why don't you have a meal with us tonight?" As we've been here, we have been here for about a month now. We have been invited to so many homes for fellowship and meal and all. But what about my Lord? What about my Savior? What evil did he do? What wrong had he done? What injustice had he done? There was not a house to invite him. Every man went to his own house. Where did the Lord Jesus go? See, chapter eight and verse one. Jesus went unto the mount of Olives. That was his place. Where did he go? He went to a mountain. He went to the mountain not only to pray. He went to a mountain to make his abode there. What will you find in the mountain? We know, some of our dear ones are here from China. And the wars have begun, the work in Metra. They had, they want to have spent the whole night in Mon Cala to pray, to find the Lords with them. And what were they doing? Most part of the night, they will be killing scorpions and insects and other things. Because that is what you find on the mountain. That is not a habitable place. You will not find any comfort there. No one can sleep on the top of the mountain. But where did our Lord go? He went there. Because nobody invited him, no house invited him. Nobody was bothered about him. Nobody cared for him. Nobody thought about him. Nobody showed love to him. Nobody was there to extend hospitality to him. So he goes to the mountain. And then in the morning, verse two, John's Gospel, chapter eight and verse two. "And early in the morning he came again into the temple, and all the people came unto him, and he sat down and taught them." Doctor, surprise, you think this? Huh? What a loving thing it is. When the morning came, when he came into the temple, he does not go elsewhere. Because he knows many people will come to the temple. There is need there. People would come there with a need. Their needs must be met. Who else can meet the needs? He came into this world to meet the needs of the people. And therefore, he would come down to the temple. And when all the people came to him, what is he doing? He sat down and taught them. If I was there, I would ask them one question. "What happened to all of you last night? Could you not, could you, could not one of you invite me? Could I not come to one of your houses and spend my time? So when the morning has come, when you are in your need, when you want blessings, when you want healing, when you want my presence, you come to me." The Lord would never say anything. He taught them. He continued to speak to them, he blessed them, he healed them. He was always doing good. That's why in Acts of the Apocles, chapter ten, verse thirty-eight, we read there, he went about doing good. So this is how we find the poverty in the Lord Jesus Christ. He became poor for our sake. And then how do we find the Lord Jesus on the cross? He not only, we not only see the poverty in his birth, poverty in his living upon this earth, but even in his death. They, when they hang the Lord Jesus Christ on the cross, they put a writing there, "King of the Jews." What is this what they do to his king? And how was he there on the cross? Almost naked. They took away even his garments. There was nobody to sympathize him. There was nobody to show pity on him. There was nobody to show love and kindness to him. He was hanging alone on the cross, between heaven and earth, cut off from everyone. He was cut off from his disciples. His parents could not do anything. The people who came to him to be healed by him, blessed by him, none of them is there around. And he is only surrounded by the Roman soldiers. And for all anything, people are only gnashing their teeth at him. They were looking at him in anger. They were ridiculing him, they were challenging him. "If you have God, come down," they said. But what did the Lord do? Never responded to anyone. He was alone on the cross. He went through loneliness on the cross. This is the price he had to pay. He not only suffered in his body. He was not only reproached. He was not only badly accused, but he was alone on the cross. And in that loneliness, when he looked around, even, he did not have a single disciple was there. He was all alone there. And at that moment, in his physical agony, in his pain and in his suffering, in his shame, in his reproach, what did he do? He knew the heaven is there. His father is in heaven. And he, he has been obedient to this father. He has been pleasing this father at all times. He never displeased his father. He never disobeyed his father. That's why Paul says, he was obedient unto death, even the death of the cross. There also he showed obedience. So he knew that the father is in heaven. He did not want any relief from the cross. But he thought, if only I looked at the father, if only I look into heaven, if only I look upon the face of my father, what will happen? I could get perhaps some courage. So with that hope, he looked to the father. Heaven was open. The father is still there. The angels of God are beholding the Lord. They are looking upon, in great astonishment, what was happening upon this earth to this beloved son of God. To this obedient son of God. To this son who was always pleasing the father. They are speechless. They are simply not able to understand. And when the Lord looked into heaven, he was not able to see the father. Many years ago, when my son was very small, about three years, my son used to be very, very mysterious, very, very active. And one day, some guests had come, they were all having food. He was running around. He toppled a glass and the glass broke. And by mistake, he jumped on one of the broken pieces of the glass. You can imagine what would have happened. He cut his soul. It was bleeding terribly. We were not able to stop. He took out all the ice from the fridge. He put it on his feet, tried to bind it, it is not stopping. So the only option left is to rush him to the hospital. We thank God, there was a hospital close by. We ran to the hospital. And then, when we went there, when he showed, he selected the people in the emergency, they said, "We have to immediately attend to your son, you have to do something. And you please stay outside, we will attend to your son." So they took him away into the theater, they closed the door. And then they saw, looked for any pieces of, glass pieces that could be there. Time or nothing of that was there, but it was still bleeding. And yet they put compression band, bandage and closed. Then they came out and said, "Your son needs some sutures. And also, he missed the main vein there by just two centimeters. If it had cut into that, by now your son would have led to death. So we have to put sutures now. So you please stay outside, we will finish the work and bring your son, bring your son." I said, "No, I would like to be there." They said, "No. It is in the theater, we have to do this, so kindly stay out." So we stayed, I stayed out, me and my brother were there. And we could hear our son crying. And what was he crying? He was using only one word. "Apa, apa, apa," that's all. I could hear those words. He cried at the top of his voice. And then slowly it was reducing because he was losing his strength. I banged the door, being the father, I was very eager. I banged the door. And then they opened the door. They said, "Yes, what do you want? My son is crying." I said, "Here, we know, it will have pain." And also, they could not administer any anesthesia. Because he had just had his food. So the doctor said, "He has to bear the pain, we have to do our work." So he is crying inside, I am kept outside. I was hearing my son crying. Then I understood the cry of the Lord Jesus Christ from the cross. What did he say? "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" The Lord was speaking to me. "For just one wound, you are so troubled. You are crying, your heart is beating, your heart is throbbing. What about my beloved son on the cross? I give away my son on the cross for you." That day, he was broken. This was still going on, he is still crying. And then, again, they banged the door. They said, "Please wait, it will take time. Your son is not allowing us to do anything." Then I kept quiet, I was only praying. Then, after some time, they themselves opened the door. They asked me to come inside. So what do I think? I thought it was, oh well, I can go and carry my son. Oh. But when I went there, nothing had happened. Only the bleeding had stopped, the cut is very deep. And they said, "We are not able to put the suture because he is not allowing us to do anything. We are not able to do. All of us put together, we are not able to overpower him." And he wants "apa." His voice is gone, now by now, he is not able to cry. Very feebly, I am able to hear "apa, apa," he said. I went inside, I saw his face was, you can read, he had no more strength. Then, they said, "You be here now. You put the sanitizer and all, come inside, put some mask and then come." So I went inside and then I went near my son. And I held it by his face and I said, "Jason, don't worry, I am here, I am going to be here with you. You please hold them, what you..." Then he said, "Don't leave me. Don't leave me and held me tightly." Then I said, "I am not going to leave you." So he held my hand tightly, I held his face tightly. They did the work within two minutes. How could they do that? Because his father was beside him. The Lord was again speaking to me. When my son was on the cross, where was I? I could not be with my son. My son looked into heaven. He wanted to see my face, but I had to turn away my face. Why? That is the price the Lord paid. Because of my sin and our sin. Because our sin and iniquity was upon him. His own father could not behold him, could not see him, could not be near him, could not be pleasant with him. It is only on the cross, this father and son were separated. Never the separation came between them. They were always together. But on the cross, at that time, the father had to be separated till he will run. That is the price he paid. Not just the physical pain and agony. It is the mental agony of being separated from his father. You could not bear this now. And that is why he is crying, using the words, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" He is not using the word "father." Because this relationship of the father and the son has been cut off. Prior to that, when he prayed earlier, he used the word "father." He said, "Father, forgive them, they do not know what they are doing." But now, it is not fathers. It has become a god. He is standing in the place of a sinner before God. And what should God do? God cannot show any mercy for the sinner, for the sin, or the sin that is upon a man. Now, here is the Lamb of God, bearing and carrying the whole sin of the humanity upon him. So when the father saw the son, he had to turn away his face. Because he saw the sin of the world upon him. So that made him to leave him, forsaking and take it, remove his hand from him. And this is the price due to beloved, he paid for us. Because the redemption of our soul has been that much precious. That's why he became poor for our sake. He emptied himself. He gave away everything. And even upon this earth, he saw how, what a life he lived. And on the cross, what a great price he paid. And because he paid the price, what has happened? You and I have been purchased. You and I have been purchased. Now we belong to him. This field belongs to the Lord. So what has he done now? He has not only purchased this field, he puts the gold there. What is the gold? This field belongs to the Lord Jesus Christ, the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. That's what we normally do. In India, as soon as a land or a field is purchased, we put a fencing and we put a ward there. Why? We don't put a ward there. Anybody can knock it off. So that shows we belong to him. That's what we read in the book of Psalm of Solomon. I am his and he is mine. We are the Lord's and we are the Lord's and he is ours. So that is how this first principle is being fulfilled. He has purchased us. He has paid the price of this purchase. And so we belong to him. And now because we belong to him, he now begins our work in our lives to bear fruit. So that is the first principle, possession or purchase of the field. Now coming to the book of Isaiah, chapter five. We read what this field is, what sort of field it is. Isaiah, chapter one and verse one. Now will I sing to my well-beloved a song of my beloved touching his vineyard. My well-beloved hath a vineyard in a very fruitful hill. Whose vineyard it is? This is his vineyard. Meant only to bear fruit for him. Meant only to bear fruit, much fruit, so that he is glorified, not any man. So for that intention, we have been purchased. And then in verse one, the last portion we read, it is in a very fruitful hill. So this is the place. Our second principle we come to, the provision for this field. Not only we have been purchased, there has been a provision. This field is not an ordinary field. It says here, it is on a very fruitful hill. It is not on a barren land. There is not only treasure hid there, there is also fertility there. There is scope for abhorrent fruit there. That's what is called as a fruitful hill. Hill means it is an elevated place. It does not belong to the plains. It is above the plains. So this is what Christ has done. He has not only purchased us, he has not only redeemed us, he has not only delivered us from this world, from the wicked one. As Paul says, where are we now? We are seated with Christ in heavenly places. That is how he has lifted us. This also brings another thought. We will see later on. It speaks about our separation. The hill means an elevated spiritual life. And also hill or mountain, it speaks about closeness and nearness to the Lord. Because we read in the book of Exodus, on two occasions, Moses was on the top of the mountain. On the second occasion, when he was on the mountain and when he came down, what do we find in Moses? Forty days and forty nights, he did not eat anything or drink anything. That man should collapse. He will not be able to come down. Now, it is not only difficult to go up the mountain. It is also equally difficult to come down the mountain also. Because if you are not careful, you will slip and fall and it could be very miserable. Some of you know about Brother Dhanraj. He had a elder brother, Brother Alex. His daughter went on trekking in UK. She was there. And when she was coming down, she just had a slip. One place it slipped. She came down, crashing down. She injured her back so much. She was better than for at least couple of years. So it is very, very dangerous. So coming down also is equally difficult. But this man Moses, fasting for forty days, not even drinking anything, is still coming down. That is the power of God. So whenever we go on the mountain, we have, whenever we have this mountain top experience, there we receive the power of God in us. And then secondly, more than that, as Moses was coming down and approaching the children of Israel, as he was coming nearer and nearer, they made sure they could identify that it is only Moses. But when we came near, it is a different Moses. Why? Not that he became lean and slim, but there was something on his face. They could not behold the face of this man. When they looked at him, they are not able to look at him. His face was shining. And we read in the word of God, Moses himself did not know that his face was shiny. And therefore they said, Moses, cover your face. We cannot behold you. And as Moses could have asked them, it is not recorded. Why, why, I am the same Moses. What has happened to me? They will say, you are the same, but not your face. Your face is shining. There is brightness upon your face. This is not ugly shining. This is not ugly brightness. This is divine shining. This is divine brightness. And we cannot behold that. So this is what we also will experience. That's why not only being possessed by the Lord is important, the mountain top experience, the elevated experience, the experience of closeness and nearness to the Lord is very, very important. Only then we are able to reflect the Lord's glory. See, that's why Paul says, writing to believers in the book of Thessalonians. See the book of Thessalonians and chapter two. Second Thessalonians and chapter two. Verse fourteen. Second Thessalonians, chapter two and verse fourteen. Whereunto he called you by your gospel to the obtaining of the glory of our Lord Jesus Christ. What is those words? Obtaining the glory of our Lord Jesus Christ. We can obtain this glory. In one translation, it says, sharing of the Lord's glory. That means the intention here is the Lord wants to share his glory with us. And that's what Moses experienced. And how did he experience it? Where did he experience it? It was on the top of the mountain. So we need to have this experience. Not only being possessed by him, but also to be brought on to that elevated place, on top of the mountain, where we can receive the Lord's power and also receive the Lord's glory. See, before even we could bring glory to the father through our fruitful life, the Lord is sharing his glory with us. It's something what we cannot understand. See, how good the Lord is. That's why we are still in God. As we live in this world, we, others are able to see God's glory in us. Others are able to see God's glory in our midst. This has happened in many places. So for our fruit-bearing, this is very, very important. Not only the possession of the land, but our field, but also to come onto the fruitful hill. Now what does this word fruitful mean? It speaks about fertility. Now the Lord has not only just purchased us and decided to bring us out to the mountain top experience, but also he has provided this fertility for our fruit-bearing. And what is this fertility? I will just refer to that. Maybe we will see it later on. We find that in Ephesians and chapter four. Ephesians and chapter four, verse eleven and twelve. Ephesians, chapter four, verses eleven and twelve. And he gave some apostles and some prophets and some evangelists and some pastors and teachers. What for? For the perfecting of the saints, for the work of the ministry, for the edifying of the body of Christ. This is the fertility. God has given this five-fold gift to the church. And through this five-fold gift, the Lord is able to bring us into fruitfulness. The fertility is given to us. And what is this? It is a five-fold fertility. He has given some apostles and some prophets and some evangelists and some pastors and teachers. Now he is using the word some, some, some. He does not say many apostles, nor does he say many prophets or many evangelists. Only few of them or a mixture of all these five. See, for example, the cultivators, the farmers, they know. They add a lot of manure and fertilizers for the quick growth of crops. In the same way, fathers are bearing fruit, this fertility is very much required. And what is that fertility? First of all, he has given apostles. Who are these apostles? We know they are those who are chosen by God, called by God. And they are those who are haunted by God. And as we saw in the previous thing, through the apostles, we have the doctrine. Through the apostles, we have the foundation, our Christian foundation. God has given, used these apostles to bring us into that foundation and also to impart this doctrine, the sound doctrine and the right doctrine. We saw what the doctrine is. We also saw from Ezekiel, chapter forty-seven, the manifestation of the right and sound doctrine. And now secondly, we read about prophets. And who are these prophets? Prophets are those who stand between God and man. Not necessarily for the ministry of prophecy, but also to bring, convey the new oracles and the messages of God. Because in the New Testament times, in the days of grace, the prophecy is not so much required as it was in the Old Testament. But the Lord is raising these prophets who are not only warning us, but also they bring the messages of God to us. They convey the verb of the Lord to us. They convey the thoughts of the Lord to us. That's why the Lord has given these prophets to us. And then thirdly, some evangelists. These are those who have got great passion for the souls. Now suppose if only preachers are there, only prophets are there, only doctrine are there. What about salvation of souls? So for that reason, the Lord has given this burden of evangelization. Now you all know the persecution that have taken place in India. Despite that, people are not intimidated. They are not afraid. We find more and people, more and more people are now rushing from south to north. Now, for example, during the Christmas period, hundreds of people have gone from Uttar Pradesh alone to go and support the work of the Godsevens who are living there, particularly in Uttar Pradesh. They are not intimidated. While they are doing that, they could as well spend their time taking leave and going to places. It's a Christmas vacation. They can be with their families. And there is an amount of risk. Anything can happen to them in the gospel campaign. They can be beaten. They can be killed. They can be harmed. But they are not worried. Why? Because they have this passion for souls. And very interestingly, in Uttar Pradesh, in the recent past, more than nine assemblies have been established. And in those assemblies, not few, few hundreds are gathering every Sunday. And attack is there. Even police is trying to harm them as I was sharing with Brother Vali yesterday, myself and Brother Shaita. They are not afraid. They are challenging the police. They are questioning the police. Those who have accepted the Lord recently, they are challenging. They are asking what evil they have done, what wrong they have done. Because they came, they gave the gospel, because we accepted the Lord Jesus, our homes are blessed. We are healed. We have peace. We have joy, which our temples could not give, our pujalis could not give, our mullahs could not give. They are openly coming out. On the one side, persecution is going on. But on the other side, passion for souls is also increasing. People are going. They are wanting to go. Young people. They are running. They are not able to get reservations on the trains. In unreserved compartments, they are travelling. And they are reaching those places for the sake of propagation of the gospel. So this is the second or third gift the Lord has given to the church. And this is what brings fertility for our fruit-bearing. And then fourthly, he is speaking about pastors. And who are the pastors? They are those who are shepherds and they are those who are elders. They are like fathers. And this is what is a need of the world. Nowadays, we need such pastors, such shepherds to protect the place of fathers. As I Paul writing to the believers in Corinthians, he says, though there be ten thousand teachers, there are only few fathers. There is a great lack of fathers. There is a great lack of shepherds. There is a great lack of comforters these days. People of God are going through difficulties and trials. They need fathers. They need shepherds. They need those who can be with them, spend time with them, heal their wounds, stand by them and support them. But for that, the elders and the responsible brothers, they have to bear Christ. And they cannot do it on their own. We who are in the assembly, we have to pray for them. We have to support them. Only then they will be able to fulfill this very important responsibility. And when such shepherds are there, when such pastors are there, And when such shepherds are there, when such pastors are there, that leads to fruit-bearing in the future. So that is why God has given this pastors and shepherds. Shepherds are those who know the sheep very well. It is told in Palestine, the shepherds, on average, they spend more time with the sheep than with their own children. Because fathers and the sheep are more important. David says, for example, in Psalm 23, "He makes me to lie down in green pastures." What does that mean? Not trying to put them to sleep. That's not the intention. See the book of Ezekiel and chapter 34. Ezekiel and chapter 34 and verse 15. Ezekiel 34 and verse 15. "I will feed my flock and I will cause them to lie down, say the Lord." Before lying down, there is "feed." Since in Palestine, what the shepherds do is, they take them out for grazing. And as the sheep are grazing all over, the shepherd's eyes are always upon the sheep. Whether they are few or more, or hundreds, they will always be observing, their eyes will be on the sheep. What for? So that they don't go astray. Or they are not attacked by the wolves or other beasts. And what the sheep do, as they stop grazing, when they are fully satisfied, the sign is, they lie down. One after the other, they start lying down. And there comes a time when all the sheep are fully satisfied, and all of them, they lie down. That is the time, the shepherd takes out his lunchbox and has his food. It will be 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock hours. But the shepherd will not eat. That is the concern. That is the love of the shepherd. That is the care of the shepherd. That is the sacrifice of the shepherd. So that is why David experienced that. And David himself doing it. And that is why he found in his own life, the Lord was his shepherd. And that's why the Lord said, "He is a man after my own heart." Because just as the Lord is a shepherd, David also was a shepherd. So let us pray, that the Lord will make our shepherds our elders, to fulfill this important task. And then finally, teachers. Teachers are also required. They are those who teach the truth. They are those who teach from the Word of God. As I mentioned the other day, the teachers have got a great impact on their pupils and their students. There are teachers already sitting here. I gave the example of my son. I was trying to work out his psalm, but he was making a mistake. When I pointed it to him, and I tried to correct him and show the correct thing to do, he refused to take it. He says, "No, this is not how my teacher taught me. My teacher did not teach me this." And left it to himself. And he went there the next day, and the teacher told him, "What your father said is right." The next day he comes back, he would not open his mouth. So I was insisted, I asked him, "What happened to the problem?" And he says, mumbling, "Oh, what you said only right." But the hell did he say? "What my teacher taught me is right." Even though the teacher has taught him wrong, he wants to follow the teacher. That is the impact. That is the influence of the teacher. And the Lord has given teachers to us. I stand here today to do my humble ministry because of God. Sunday School teachers, the Lord gave them. Particularly one man of God. He taught us the Word of God so simply, so clearly, so well, that all of us who were the Sunday School teachers, for God's glory and saying, we are all serving the Lord. Some of us on full-time service. And some of us, serving the Lord along with our secondary jobs, the Sunday School teachers. So for the people of God, it begins with Sunday School teachers, then youth teachers, and teachers among the people of God. So this is how we are brought into fertility, spiritual fertility. So there is no lack now, in that field that the Lord has purchased, wanted to bring forth fruit. So this is how we fulfill the principles to bring our fruit, to bring glory to God. You will see all the principles, other principles later on. So may the Lord give us a grace to know who we are and what a great prize our Lord has paid. And also let us pray for all these five-fold gifts, to be fully manifested, to be working in ordnance, especially here, among you in the royal world. So that in the days to come, we are able to bear much, much more fruit. I'm not saying that you are not bearing fruit, you are bearing fruit, you are bearing much fruit, that's not enough. Our Lord is worthy of getting much, much glory over, not just glory. Our Lord needs to be greatly glorified. So may the Lord give us a grace to do that.